All right. All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order at six P M. Could I have a roll call of the staff in front of them, please?
Mike Wagner, Gary Demasky.
Present.
James Hartman.
Here.
Mary Beth Shaw.
Here.
Matt Crowe. Cindy Byten.
All right, I am posting a please stand for the President. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You're on to one twenty-five approval of the agenda for tonight.
So moved. Second.
Okay, is there any questions about it? Hearing none. Mike.
Yes.
Barb.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Mary Beth.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
And I will guess as well. We're on to two point one, approval of the Board of Education meeting minutes from June twenty-second of twenty twenty.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Yeah, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from June twenty-second.
Mary Beth seconded. Okay, any changes? Hearing none. Mike.
Yes.
Barb.
Deborah, what do you want?
I'll just chill.
Not to be confused with Cindy Byten.
Barb. Gary.
Yes.
Mary Beth.
Yes.
Matt. And I will guess as well. All right, we're on to two point two, approval of the Board of Education workshop meeting minutes from July sixth of twenty twenty.
I'll make that motion, sorry.
Okay, any changes? All right, hearing none. Mike.
Yes.
Barb. Gary.
Yes.
Mary Beth.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
I will guess as well. All right, we're on to two point three, approval of the payroll curals disbursements.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about any of them? One or a couple seconds, a little real quick.
Just a few notes about a lot of protective equipment, virtual learning supplies, payroll refunds. Oh my goodness, boo! But, uh, yeah, but good.
I assume someone's gonna talk about the book room at P E.
Yes.
Mask, mask, yeah, okay. That was my only note, but.
Super. All right, anybody have any other questions? All right, hearing none. Mike.
Yes.
Barb.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Mary Beth.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
I will guess as well. We're on to public inputs. It's like we got two people signed up. First, we have Mr. Jim Feskey.
Mr. Chairman, members of Board of Education, administrative team, my name is Jim Feskey. My wife Shelley and my daughter Tammy and I live at eighteen ten Hall Street, right there by Black Earth. The purpose of my coming to the board meeting tonight is to offer my feelings on option two of the proposed incoming referendum. It's critical and essential that we offer this particular option to the public with the caveat of also offering a sorely needed auditorium. It's time, folks. We're in a situation now where we are competing with other school districts for school choice. Too many of our students are leaving this district because many folks feel that we don't offer the same advantages and opportunities that perhaps larger school districts do. Fact of the matter is, Wisconsin Heights is and has been for a long time the best kept secret in Western Dade County. Yes, nothing good comes cheap, and yes, it may lead to an increase in taxes, but that will also transcend into additional value to the homes that we have in the community, not to mention what it offers in the way of educational benefits to the youngsters of this community. This has long-term implications. And I wanna encourage you, work hard, do what's necessary. It won't be easy. I was a part of a building referendum myself back in nineteen ninety-five when this little school was put up. It took a lot of focus. There were a lot of naysayers, but we got it done. It wasn't easy. But now it's time for something new and different. Nothing stays the same. And of course, I realize I'm preaching to the choir here, but nevertheless, you know, I have faith in all of you. We've got a good Board of Education. We've got a good staff and an excellent team of administrators. I have every confidence that the community will step up and do what's necessary. I've talked long enough. There are others here that have something more to say, and I want to thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Stephanie Kruger.
Hi, um, I didn't realize there was a formal way to address. I apologize to the Board of, uh, School Board. Thank you for letting me speak today. Um, I feel like my head is kind of a jumbled mess about school for this upcoming school year. Um, and I guess I'll just start with feelings that I've got from input from other teachers and parents from last night when I reached out to them and this morning, asking how they were feeling about this next school year. I had two teachers, I didn't reach out to many, who have both stated that they are concerned about returning and they're only coming back because they have to keep their health insurance, not because they feel safe. I heard another teacher that is planning to return, but her child will not be attending any in-school options in our district or any other districts. Um, I have parents that are, have already signed up for the virtual Wisconsin public online classes, saying that if they join that, then unfortunately, funding gets changed for people who sign on that doesn't come to our school. I don't quite understand all that. Um, I also heard from families who had said that homeschooling for them was miserable, impossible. Their kids struggled. Their kids fell behind. Um, it was definitely hard. I experienced that myself. Um, but the kicker one that I got was a mom who wrote, "I work full-time outside of the home, so the thought of more off-site learning for my son with the new I E P gives me great gobs of anxiety. However, the thought of him getting COVID and being in the hospital alone also gives me great gobs of anxiety. Not to mention I completely respect the teachers and staff not wanting to risk exposure. This is a cluster of epic proportions." So I think when I was a teacher and I was taught that school has to be a safe place for our kids, I feel it has to be a safe place for our teachers. If kids can't learn when they're in fear, how are teachers gonna teach their best if they're in fear every day of impacting their families, impacting others? Um, and so I just think how many of our teachers are in the higher-risk category? How many are totally healthy and contract this and still die from it? How many of our teachers really do feel safe, um, like are ready to jump back in and bring them all in? I mean, it looks like maybe they can do some in learning, in school learning. I'm not sure. You know, I think back that, uh, New York City lost seventy-four people in their Department of Education by May eleventh, um, before they really knew what was going on. And then you jump to the summer and we have three teachers joining a shared space to provide a virtual summer school option for their students because they know it will help them, and all three contracted COVID. And one, Kimberly Bird, she's sixty-one, she died two weeks later. Both of her colleagues are still fighting against this. So I'm thinking of three grownups knowing what they have to do. They were wearing masks. They were social distancing. They were gloves and sanitizing. How do we expect our students, our children and the teachers to feel comfortable being more people jammed in a room for longer periods of time? I just don't feel that we can do in learns, uh, in-school learning safely right now. Um, I know that there's a push. Parents want to work. They want to get back to normalcy. What's it gonna be like if we start in school and then everything is shut down again? I feel like it's gonna be more of a burden to re-figure than if we plan to start hard, start everything, be prepared for everything remote, and then ease into it when the cases go down. It would be difficult and hard, but I feel it would be the least detrimental to even our students to be pulled away yet again. Um, I feel COVID is here. Um, I have a friend that went to get tested this morning. She works with daycare in our community. She now has to wait three to seven days to find out her results. What happens when our teachers test positive? And how long do they wait? Will families test their kids and not tell us and still send their kids? Will we get the medicated kids sent to school to hide the fever checks? I know there's a lot and there is no easy answer. Um, but I'd love it if we could find a way to do remote learning where we become the envy district of everybody else, where we think outside of the box. Um, yeah, I have some crazy ideas that I'm actually excited about if we were able to look at that. Um, yeah, so I'm hoping that we are open to, to some other options. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. Thank you. All right, uh, that is all that signed up for our public input. So we are on to four point one, which is Board President. I just wanted to say thank you to Jordan, the admin staff. Like I said a couple of weeks ago, not only have you guys taken upon yourself to educate as much as you can as far as our referendum and what we need to do and gathering details and reaching out to people, but now you have to figure out, are you gonna start the school year? And all of the scenarios are involved with that. And I said, you guys have just kind of taken on this impossible task. And yet each day you get out there and forge and meet and do the best job you can. So I mean, I appreciate that. I hope everybody can appreciate it, so. All right, that's all I had. So we're on to four point two, which would be Administrator slash admin reports.
Yeah, so like we've kind of done now for a couple of months, since we've been meeting in kind of this first meeting of the month, being more of a discussion focused and the second meeting being more of an action focused. Don't know if any board members have any questions that you would like to ask the administrators based on their reports? So I guess at this time I would kind of turn it over to board members if there's things you'd like to follow up with administrators and ask questions, then I will give you that opportunity right now.
Scott, can you hear me back there?
I can.
So are you surprised by these, these numbers, the projected enrollments?
Yeah, that's it. And so, um, those numbers are deceiving and because as Tammy in, you know, as the district director, she takes information from the census. So a lot of these kids that I, I've never seen their name before now could have moved on, you know, they, they united all. I, so these are very, very projected in that, you know, fifty-eight K could go down to forty. I mean, I just, you know, so I just throw every name on there out of the census that I have just because to be fair and try to, you know, figure it out, numbers, why do we have to do that? So those could change very dramatically, even next month, once we can have a better handle on who's actually gonna come.
And I know you were worried about, you talked about the preschool numbers and stuff. Are these kids that have actually registered in the preschool?
There's, there are probably a little over thirty that have actually registered.
Okay.
So for right now, anyway.
I guess I was kind of curious if the state's provided any guidance or insight into the county core standards and testing for the next year, given the, you know, jumbled mess we're in and if that's changing or if there's different, you know, ways of testing or, you know, the report card situation? Are there different implications for how they measure and all that kind of stuff? You can just say no.
I don't even know how to start getting through that. Um, yeah, I guess as far as testing's concerned, you know, between Dale and Liz and Andy and I, even Matt, you know, we all have to be having a hand in that. And those, a lot of companies are looking at, often they do those assessments off-site. So companies are already looking at that, realizing that might be an option for us, whereas before it really was kind of foreign. We didn't see how it could happen, but they're figuring out ways to make it happen.
Still would be very similar to the testing and the standards that you normally assess on any given normal.
Yeah, yeah.
I will say in terms of state testing, that's a, that's a huge question right now. And that's something that they're asking superintendents for feedback regarding is what areas of legislative requirements do you anticipate potentially needing relief on, similar to what happened this last school year? Testing is certainly one of the largest things that comes up routinely, um, so.
I don't almost think they have to change. I mean.
I would say I will be shocked if there are not some waivers and things requested, but with those things, they require legislative action. BPI can't just waive those items. They need support at the government level, which right now they're not playing very nicely together. But we'll see how that changes when the situation becomes a little more dire again, I would say.
Good question for Andy. How, for sports, obviously with different counties following different guidelines, how are, is it gonna be kind of going by state, gonna mandate everything across the board?
No.
Or is it like, is Dane County, you know, 'cause a lot of our schools that we play are not in Dane County, so would they still play if we don't? Or how are they gonna look at that for people that have different counties in their division, I guess?
Yeah, that's the million-dollar question. And really, yeah, it's gonna be still up to local control. You know, it's gonna be a county-by-county situation. And then each individual conference is gonna have to come up with, you know, how they're going to address that situation as far as conference championships, conference schedule, you know, all of that stuff. So, I mean, obviously you probably saw it in the, you know, the Big Ten through their non-conference schedule off. I mean, there's stuff like, yeah, there's a domino effect and, um, you know, it'll be really interesting to see what happens when you get to the postseason. And then you have certain draws that are more effective than others. And that's when we'll see if W I A actually steps in and does anything. But until then, they're gonna, you know.
So they're not getting involved really at all?
I don't anticipate them getting involved at all in the regular season, based on what they've said so far and their actions. Um, but they, you know, um, like I said, when it gets to the postseason and you see maybe certain counties shut down completely and you have certain sectional draws that are way more effective than others, then, um, if they don't address it, that would get pretty contentious, pretty heated, so. But until then, I would say they'd stay out of it. And so we'll, the state, and we'll just go, yeah, county by county. And then for us, the Capitol Conference, we're gonna meet on August sixth to talk about, um, certain guidelines, common guidelines that we can all come up with to ensure that we're all doing the same thing. We're all taking proper precautions if we get to that point where we're able to have competitions. That way, we're all on the same page. We don't have one weak link, you know, per se. So, you know, somebody's ruining it for everyone else. Um, we'll all have pretty much the same guidelines of how we would host teams and how we would be expected to travel, so.
Just wanna put it out there, and I'm not trying to incite anarchy in the community or in this room for tonight, but, um, I mean, the possibility is real, very real, that depending where Dane County is at in terms of the safer at home or whatever the order is now, number eight, that there will be the possibility that the county health department says you are not able to host competitions and you are not able to have group sizes larger than, as of today, it's twenty-five outdoors and ten indoors. For those of you that wonder how we can do this, this is considered an essential government function. But that, that could happen. So while we don't want that to happen, we also need to abide by the rules and follow the guidance from the county health department. So, uh, yeah, I just, I'll put that out there to Andy's response. What's happening in Dane County may look very different than what's happening even in our neighboring counties. Our schools are all in Dane County. Um, we will be following the rules of Dane County. So I think we need to wrap our head around those possibilities and understand that that could happen. And time is becoming shorter and shorter. I think that's why you see what's happening at the college level, is they're trying to buy themselves some time.
I don't know, Brian, you know, do you wanna talk about the new bookroom? That we may remain glad kids enjoy, but.
Well, thanks for asking, Barb.
Yeah.
Yeah, very exciting. Finally, you got an updated bookroom at Black Earth Elementary. That was part of our English and Arts adoption. It was on our list of, you know, things we wanted to try to address. So the new bookroom is in, uh, the old bookroom is out, but there had been items that, you know, I've been looking at, Scott. I mean, they were years and years old in there and just, you know, in my time here at Wisconsin Heights, it had never been updated. So fifteen years, we had added some things here and there. So, yeah, that, um, is here. Um, we've opened the boxes, got them out on shelves. Our next step is just getting them organized, getting them stamped, labeled, organized. So, um, hopefully we'll be able to use them, you know, in the fall. So, yeah, really exciting. Titles are updated, uh, just the content of the books too, more diversity, more appropriate for what we should be using with our K two kids, so.
Dale, do you wanna just kind of talk a little bit about the purpose of a bookroom? Because if you're not in education, you might wonder, like, well, don't they have it all over?
Yeah, um, thanks for the good, uh, good point. What it is, it's basically it's a resource for our teachers to use in their classrooms for their guided reading groups. So when they're working with small groups of kids, uh, expanded bookroom, um, there's sets of titles. So there's like five copies of the same book in the bookroom. So as a teacher, I go in and I grab a set of five books that I can take back to my classroom and work with five students in a small room setting. Could be our struggling students, could be our high achievers, but it gives us more variety of topics and they, um, and it just takes a lot of books to be able to do that in every classroom, multiple times a day and in every homeroom. We need a lot of books, so our teachers have a variety of books that they can use and share with our kids. So that's how it is. Our teachers come, get their set of five books, take it back to their classroom, use it with the groups that they need, take it back so the next teacher can use it.
That's encouraging. Matt, thanks for the update on the Students with Disabilities initiatives and the numbers and the details. That was, uh, was really great. The other thing I just wanna, I'm encouraged by the continued emphasis on mental health for our students as well. And I think that's really to be commended to continue that effort as well. Thank you for that.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely, yeah, it's been, it's been stressful all, all around for, for students and staff. And it's, it's something that we'll continue to emphasize and have, have a great staff to, to do that. I, um, when you were talking about the special ed numbers, I just wanted to point something out. Um, we were down a little bit compared to what we were last year, but, um, it, it's a COVID impact because usually, um, in March, April and May, we are either finishing up or we've got enough data to move forward on special education initial evaluations. So when it went back, um, previous year, yeah, it was about six to seven that we finished up initial evaluations, qualifying kids into special education between middle of March and end of June, because some of them even go into summer. Um, so I just, I just wanted to point, point that out. And the other thing I wanted to point out, um, so in the, the staff retention, um, and I did wanna celebrate it. It might not happen, so we have hundred percent.
Tony, we're going to say it.
Well, I, I, I still wanna celebrate it. And then, um, thanks to a grant that Liz wrote, um, we have, um, two, um, educational assistants who earned their special education teacher's license. So we have two people that are still in our district that, um, are able to fill in and one is, one is slated to fill in on a maternity leave, um, come fall. So it's, it's great to have people who are in-house and ready to, ready to step up. So, yes, so thanks to Liz for writing that grant. And we have one more educational assistant at the, the high school who's gonna be starting that. Um, so they, um, they're able to get compensated for some of their tuition. Um, and they can work and it's a, it's an online program. Everything's an online program in the spring, but, um, they, they do their student teaching in the, in the spring with us. So Kelly Payne and Ashley Kramer are the two teachers that earned their teaching certification.
Nice.
Could I ask you a question about the I E P numbers?
Yeah.
I was just curious how many are in the same, like what proportions in the same family? How many, how many families are there that have multiple I E Ps in their same family?
You know, we, we don't have that broken down. I could, I can get that information.
I was like a stult as fine. I didn't know. Is that very common to have multiple family members?
Um, it, it can be. Um, I would, I would say it's, it's probably, um, less than twenty-five percent by the ballpark. Yeah, somewhere between fifteen and twenty-five percent if I would ballpark it. Good question.
This is hostile. You're back there hiding. I can see you. Yes. Credit recovery, sounds like it's going well.
It's going well. We have had, actually, as of today, eleven students have completed classes.
Nice.
Yeah.
Awesome. Yeah, and then graduation was the second question.
So.
It sounds like planning is continuing.
Planning is continuing. I met with, uh, senior class advisors and senior class officers yesterday. And we are organizing for a drive-in graduation, drive-through graduation at Warner Park. And so we are going to take a little tour of the facility here this week or early next week to see what we have to bring in for any tech or any sort of, like, infrastructure, like a stage or anything like that, or if we're gonna just have to do like a pre-recorded graduation and just show it more like as a movie. So, yeah.
But obviously, yeah, big thank you to Steve Schmidt for making that happen and offering up the facilities for us. I think that's an opportunity to turn it into something really, really cool and really memorable.
No, we're very excited. Um, I think it's gonna be memorable and that's what we're looking for.
Yeah.
Those on that, that's really special.
Yeah.
All right, anybody have anything else? Any questions or anything?
I have a question for Jordan that he can totally defer. This is a sidebar that doesn't have me, but, um, I saw that you met with the Village Economic Development Group. So I was just curious if there was any, any more reporting from those meetings that would be relevant for tax base for the public.
Sometimes it's good to have a mask on. No.
You can defer.
No, I'm totally teasing. Um, I've been participating in those meetings in Village of Black Earth. I see quite some times. That makes it sound like a really long time, but for a while now, as able. Really just trying to, um, offer a bit of a voice and a perspective. Clearly, I mean, at this point, this is my fourth of July in the community, so I don't have this long perspective. But at the same time, I've been in some other places, worked in similar-sized communities and certainly worked in other school districts. So it's just been interesting for me to see how local government works in comparison to school government. I think there's a few more bureaucratic levels, for whatever reason, in our community government than what at least we're fortunate to have here in school government. There are some positive inroads being made, I think some healthy discussions. Uh, the Village of Black Earth right now is having to update their strategic plan and a part of that will be a community survey. Uh, so the focal point of the Economic Development Committee has, of recent, been trying to make that survey relevant. When they did this a decade ago, there was many, many, many questions which had some value, but based on where we're at right now and what I think the community is trying to do, the question we've asked ourselves is do we need to ask fifty questions that really don't get at the essence of what it is we're trying to figure out? Or would we be better served to ask ten questions that kind of get right to the point and say, what can we do to stimulate the Village of Black Earth, um, in the community? I mean, some huge things that get talked about a lot, I mean, the Wolf Run Trail and the possibility that that has when that comes to fruition, even the segment from behind our school into the village and then beyond. So, I mean, there's, there's certainly some very, I would say, key pieces that have been identified. There's hope. The encouraging news for the Village of Black Earth, and I know even to a certain extent, N A Z O as well, I mean, the residential housing starts have now been for three years basically as high as they've been in the last ten or fifteen years. In our little neck of the woods on the south side of town, it's like dandelions. They pop up every day. So that is very encouraging with the residential growth. Ideally, that would not just bring tax base, it would also bring students. Uh, so that's, I think, that's a key partnership between us and the village. But, you know, people are positive. They, they want things to grow and to be better. It's just trying to find that right mix between. It's just trying to find that right mix between what was and what can be. There's another meeting this Wednesday. They are. They're publicly posted meetings. I would like it to a committee meeting, like the board, you know, would have. So they're Economic Development Committee. There's a couple of members from the actual board. There's a representative from the Chamber of Commerce. There's a representative from the Trail Association. Not sure what my designation is, community member slash school employee.
All right. Well, the admin gave their reports, Jordan. Did you want to add anything just from a personal standpoint?
No, not really. I mean, James, you mentioned, it's kind of funny because you feel busy every year. And then you get to a year like this and you spend hours and hours a week planning for a school year that's going to be unlike any other. And then planning for potential referendum on facilities that encompasses hours and hours of your life as well. And then you say, what did I do last July? But I never felt bored. So I have to go back to my meeting notes. I guess probably planning more on things like curriculum and instruction. But it is what it is. The reality is these are two really important things that are happening right now. And that's really been the focal point of many, many meetings and discussions. But we will, we will continue to work and to plan, full acknowledgement that we're chasing a moving target and just trying to do the best we can with the situation in front of us.
Well, thank you for that again and the admin stuff. All right. Well, if no one has anything else, we'll move on to item, agenda, or Agenda Item Five, District Business. And it looks like 5.1 is Budget and Finance. Cindy Vitting is going with the chair. She's not here tonight. So we'll just default to Jordan.
Sounds good. We have Lisa Voison, who I've not heard her voice yet, but I saw her name. Lisa?
I'm here.
Thank you. I appreciate your patience. So we have Lisa Voison from Barrett Financial Services, who has worked with the district in the past regarding district borrowing and finance. She provided a brief update for the board that she's going to go through. Lisa, I believe I'm sharing my screen, so hopefully you see the first slide in your deck.
I do see it. So you can go ahead and just, um, for the next slide.
Perfect. You tell me what to do and I'll listen.
Awesome. I just wanted to give you guys a quick update. I know we talked in length in April, I believe, a lot about how the finance facility projects, some different tax impacts. So I just pulled up some of the key slides. I just wanted to give you an update. That's all. The spending target has been super steady. It came down from when we were together in April. Interest rates have come down, which has been good for the April referendum. Referendums, I've been locking in, you know, two, two and a half percent for the interest rates for 20-year borrowing. So it's been unprecedentedly low interest rates. So that, that's good. You know, I don't know whether it'll be later this year or next year, but I just wanted to give you a little bit of an update that the COVID volatility has kind of settled down again. We're in the walls of summer a little bit too, so that helps. The next slide is, what I did was I just updated the tax impacts for the two questions that I believe were discussed at the last meeting, which is question one for the 27 million new elementary model and remodel little high school for the 27 million. And then question two being the auditorium. So we had 27 million, the auditorium at seven and a half million, for a total of 34.5 million. The tax impacts, I updated, they didn't change much from April, so we were a little surprised, actually, Jordan and I, when we got the numbers back. Because I lowered the interest rate a little bit, I think. But what happened was your aid situation, your July aid estimates came out a little bit higher. So, or lower, I should say. So we're assuming a little bit less state aid, so that's why the tax impacts stayed about the same. And I think those are going to be the tax and tax moves moving forward unless I see a big change between now and September in terms of communication if you go forward in November. Again, some of the assumptions I'm using, three and a half to 375 interest rate, very conservative, as I just said, we've been locking in two and a half. So I mean, I've got a full percentage point differential there. I do have a series of borrowings. I don't have it all at once. I'm saying you're doing maybe one next year and one the following year. Talk about those details later, but I did have two, two debt issues. I'm assuming that some growth in your tax base, because you do have that TIB closing and I'm putting that assumption in there as well. And then like I said, the state aid, we have an assumption there for, based on your July ones. Any questions on that?
Lisa, I don't want to turn this into a 20-minute explanation for, for your benefit, but would it be possible to give the one-minute explanation of what the hold harmless provision is?
So you cannot lose more than 15% of your state aid in any given year. You are a negatively gated school district, so every new dollar you spend, you lose 43 cents on the dollar. Well, with this new debt coming at board, that's a big expenditure. It's a big debt payment that you didn't have before. So it kicks you into hold harmless. You're not going to lose more than new expenditure is your debt payment. You're not going to lose 43% of your debt payment with state aid, because there's a hold harmless. You can only lose 15% of what your aid was last year. So actually, in a way, it's good that you're not losing more than 15%. Because with the new debt payment on board, you could lose more. Does that make sense?
It does. So basically, we're looking at, we know we're going to lose 15% for a number of years.
Yeah, the foreseeable future. Right now, I mean, the formula could change.
Okay, that's, that's all I wanted was just because that, these things can be confusing.
Yeah, and I think from a communication standpoint, Doreen, I, I don't think it's something we put in the, out to the public, but I think it's good for the board to know that it's not having as big of an impact on your state aid as it would.
Okay.
And then just a couple more slides. A reminder, I just love this slide because it, you know, it's, it's five years' history for your school district's mill rate. And again, moving to decimal over two, you know, in 1920, someone with $100,000 home paid $1,073 on taxes versus five years ago. Their home was valued at $100,000, which is $1,002.06. So a reminder that the mill rate hasn't changed. Next slide is, reminder of the, I, I know I showed it this in April, but I want to remind you again that November has the highest passage rate for debt issues, actually debt non-recurring and recurring referendums all along. November is the most successful time of year to go on referendum. I just, again, statistically, you go when you're ready, but I wanted to just put that out there and remind you it's a 72% passage rate since 2000. And then presidential election years, again, very, very strong passage rate. These are all presidential election years. And right on that date, the passage rate, so again, really strong, as well as the last Republican election. So we've just seen, I just feel like this trend that there, there's just more support from state-owned schools, resulting in passing Friday, not three years. So again, statistics, but just a reminder. I think that was it.
That is. Board members, any questions for Lisa?
I know that that last slide she showed, I know a lot of these folks who were in attendance when we talked a couple of weeks ago, and that, that's one of the things that was driving me towards this November election. And when we talked about the younger voter turnout and some things like that, so that's what we were talking about.
I kind of had some questions, not necessarily. I don't know if you just can answer these, but about the Fund 46, you had put some of those up. And if you go through the list and kind of tally up some of the stuff that would be taken care of if the referendum passes. I'm just curious what happens to Fund 46 when a lot of those capital expenditures just kind of poof. Is it good to not, you know, or hold that all?
Yeah. Hey, Lisa, did you hear that? Barb's real close to me, so I'm hoping you did.
Yep.
So I guess my, my perspective on that, you certainly can correct me if I'm wrong, but, so we started Fund 46 in 2017, meaning we can get at that approximately July of 2022 with that five-year window, which would actually align quite nicely if something were to happen this November with the referendum. With the projects that we have listed on there, it's a very extensive list. Would I be of the understanding that we would be able to, if projects were listed on there, use those dollars? And therefore, that would be stuff that either we would not borrow for then or we would choose to tackle other things with any borrowed dollars that we have? Can I guess, can you clarify that from your perspective financially?
The borrowed dollars have to go toward whatever the referendum question language is, or the purpose of the referendum, whatever's shown up on the ballot. Which I know is all encompassing and inclusive of a lot of items, but keep that in mind that whatever you, when you borrow funds, you have to spend it on whatever's on the ballot, whatever that language is on the ballot. So it's usually pretty broad. And the right, Fund 46 can go to pay any of these referendum projects. Or Fund 46 can go to pay future capital needs. It doesn't necessarily have to be drawn all in July of '22. It could be, you know, you could hold on to it and it could be a future need as well.
So once that gets answered, your question? Is up, then it can be on an annual basis redraw?
Correct. Yeah, no, anytime. We just need to hit that five-year window. So it's, it's not as though the dollars from when they go in, they have a five-year sunset. The sunset's from the creation. So once we hit that five years, those dollars can be used basically at any point for the projects that appear on our, on our list.
There isn't like a min or max value that.
Nope. Nope.
Because I just, you know, went through and I think a lot of the things that we are talking about with the updates and stuff is close to 3.2 million or so. So you start talking about completing some of those off there in a process.
All right. Any other questions for Lisa?
I know. She did a great job.
Yeah, thanks so much, Lisa.
Thank you again for jumping on with us and we'll be in touch.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks.
Yep, take care. The other two items that we had under Budget and Finance, two pieces that are part of our kind of annual approvals, lunch and breakfast prices for the year and then the school fee schedule. Do you know if board members have any questions regarding what's attached to the agenda?
I guess I'm curious how, how it works in the foreseeable future with distribution and if it's like half and half or, you know, some new virtuals and don'ts and.
Yeah, I would, as I've said a few times, those will be things that unfortunately need to be kicked out. And the canines get kicked down the road because, I mean, for example, like with last school year, the situation we found ourselves in at the end of the year. Well, we don't have final numbers on everything. That situation, which would have appeared on the surface to be devastating financially, based on how the federal programs were set up and the things that we got access to that we previously did not have access to because they waived the qualifying requirements. That situation did not place us in a perilous outcome with regards to food service. So I guess the best thing that I can say without saying something that I'm like totally out of my league and talking about is we've got a really good director who knows the DPI in and out, because that's where she worked before she came here. And depending what happens with school, whether there's in-person, there's virtual, there's some of both. She will be as much in the know as anybody for our district to be able to capitalize on programs that are as friendly as possible to both our students and our school district financially. But we did not change prices with anything. So there are certain requirements that the price has to go up if you're below a certain level, but we're not at that level. So we did not increase prices for food service at all this year. We kept those the same. If you noticed on the school fee schedule, we had had some discussions, feels like eons ago, but it wasn't. Probably January, February, had discussions about school fees and ideas. And then just with all the uncertainty, made the decision not to make wholesale changes. But the one note you will see on there is that we put an overall cap on course fees. So that to us was kind of an equalizer, where it wasn't department-specific. It wasn't going to benefit one area more or less than the other. And we did have a number of students that actually were above that threshold. So I mean, there will be some benefit to students and families, but not, quite honestly, not to the point where it's going to put the district in the hole. You need to come up with $40,000 in lost revenue. That's not what we're talking about here. Any other questions? I was just, I like, I like, we thought that was a step towards what we were hoping to do, but yet, given the uncertainty, it wasn't such a huge step that we came back and regretted it later.
And then it looks like there's a note on there that says that these items will come back on the July 27th agenda for approval. So we'll be bringing them back up for now.
Yeah, so if you guys don't have any concerns with what you see tonight, and just, we're trying really hard to keep this first agenda as discussion-focused as possible and get all the action wherever possible on the second agenda. In this case, it's not going to make or break anything if this waits two weeks. So we will bring that back in two weeks for formal approval.
All right. Anybody have anything else as far as budget and finance is concerned? All right, if they're done, we'll move on to 5.2, which is curriculum. Looks like our chair is not pro. Do you have any comments or do you just want to?
I read through the stuff. I don't have any specific comments on what I had to go through.
I know Dale is here as well.
You know, I can ask you kind of the educational standards. No changes there from last year. This is our annual update, where we just announce what standards we'll be following. So it's the same as last year.
See, these are all things that statutorily were required to do every year, just to get approval from the board on these items. So if you've been on the board long enough, you're like, Dan, I feel like we do this all the time. We do it every year.
I really think it was a standard language or.
All right. Well, then this will be coming back on July 27th for final approval as well. So if anyone has anything else, we'll move on.
Sounds good.
Okay, so we're on to 5.3, which is employee relations, with the chair is Mo Beshal.
So thanks for making it look like we had a good return on the exit interview, seven on eight. That's pretty darn good. Were you surprised by any of the comments?
At this point, my least surprise is rarely something that happens. And quite frankly, I really, I really wasn't. All joking aside, I highlighted a few things, you know, areas of concern that people brought up. Something such as salary, you know, I think that's one of those things that, I mean, I know, I think I know that's something we've been working on for the three years that I've been working with the board here. We're trying to address. We actually were going to be, we were hoping to be more aggressive in our approach this year. But then once again, with all of the uncertainty, overstate budgets, local budgets, that kind of next aggressive strip, or step, excuse me, to try to address some of that was slightly derailed. I mean, what I do have confidence in saying, and the numbers don't lie, I mean, we have improved drastically compared to where we were even just three years ago. So I mean, the notion at that time that we had some staff members that had been here four and five years and were making $36,000 for a salary. We have no one in that situation based on what the board has done, what the board has observed over the last few years. So definitely understand, you know, for some people, their frustration. And as I've said to staff members in, you know, multiple locations when we've all been together, this, this isn't one because of the scale of the situation. This was not. This was not one that we were going to be able to fix in one budget or two budgets or probably three budgets. And for some people, they'll never feel like it's fixed and I get that. That's human nature. But we are doing what I think financially the district can afford to do. And as I said, the last three years, the numbers don't lie. Between the base salary increases and then the supplemental pay that staff members have earned as a part of the program that we implemented in 2018, 19. I would say we've been as competitive as, as anybody. So I think that's, that's a good thing and it just highlights something that we're aware of and we're working on. Seeing facilities and there is an area of concern, I would say that's another thing that we're, we're aware of and are working on. Some of the positives though, I mean, the fact that people feel our benefits are good. I mean, that's, that's something to hang our hat on and that we don't have to, I guess, at least maybe dedicate as much energy to continue the changes too. Exiting staff members saying that they had positive feedback about their supervisor, the admin and the board. When exiting staff members say that, that's a, that's a very positive sign. Cause typically people, people leave for some reason and you hope it's not because they're angry. And I think their feedback would indicate that's not why they left. It was relocation. It was stay at home with children closer to home. Those are things that are tough to argue with. And then the note about the morale is good and there's a lot of collaboration amongst the staff members. Thought considering we did this survey on late May and June, what we were just on the heels of was coming off of three months of online instruction. I was very. Yeah, I was very positive and these are always good to get people's feedback, to get their feelings. The other thing I have talked about with Beth is she's starting to settle into kind of an HR role too is the concept of stay interviews. Where you talk to the people that you have and find out what it is that keeps them here. Because that information is equally valuable because then you can use that to help support your other staff members. Sometimes negative interviews, excuse for analogy, but it's kind of like an autopsy. It's already over. We, we don't have a chance to fix that situation. We can talk to people that are still here and are working. That becomes valuable information. So yeah, I guess that was a little bit of feedback that I had, Mary Beth, or kind of some big thoughts that I had. Our admin team's going to talk about this on Wednesday when we meet in person and just kind of reflect and ask, you know, what can we do better? It's just another piece of feedback, which is helpful.
And then the plus of we just don't have any people leaving. That's, that's a good thing.
No, yeah, I mean, we talked about that a little bit. I mean, Matt Green's like the glue that's holding this place together evidently. Matt for president. He might be a viable candidate. But no, I, I appreciate that as well. That's, once again, that's a good sign.
All right, well, it doesn't look like we don't have anything else in here. It just says.
No, this is just information only. If people have questions, be happy to answer those.
Right. Does anybody have anything else for employee relations? Well, let's move on to 5.4, which is facilities and transportation with Mike Weidner as our chair.
Very touched on it for the, in your plan, I guess, so we.
Yeah, I mean, Fund 46 is on there, but that's something we should have already kind of touched on.
Oh, it's okay. No, yeah, so I mean, Fund 46, I tried to put it in the notes here. I mean, that's, that's something that the board had the foresight to approve three years ago. And really what the Fund 46 is, is capital improvement project for long-range facility planning. The stipulations, obviously, that you can't touch that money for five years after you put it there. But then once you get that five years, that becomes a resource that you can utilize for projects that appeared on that long-range plan. So that the fact sheet, I think it's very helpful information. So if you're a little cloudy in terms of what is this or what are the regulations, what does it mean? That's a pretty helpful document. To Barb's, to Barb's question, yeah, I mean, those will be decisions that as a district will have to make. If, if a referendum does happen and obviously is successful, well then what happens to the Fund 46 plan? What happens to the Fund 46 dollars? How do we choose to utilize those dollars?
We don't have them, we can just write it out.
We don't. You don't, you know, to me, the, the challenge will be is balancing potentially writing it out versus the reality of what the tax impacts are going to be. And is that something you want to do to try to find the happy medium if you will? But in terms of a real conversation, that's two years from today. Any other questions, Mike, or anybody else kind of regarding? I mean, you'll see that project last obviously has a number of things on there. That's quite intentional. We want to make sure we include just about any project that we think we might do. We don't want to get to the end of this and be like, oh, we can't do that because we didn't have it on our list. And you'll see that, I mean, very few have high priority, but some of them that do are things that we've talked about. Their plan, like the roof at Blackbird and a few others. Ah, yeah, that, that one is definitely, needs to be done.
Just over $900,000 worth of high priority. Just a mere $910,000.
All right. Well, once again, this is just information at this point. They'll be coming back on July 27th for final approval.
Yep, the state just asked any time we update the plan, we have documentation that was approved by the school board and that's just something we'll have in our file as a part of the Fund 46 creation.
All right. Does anybody have any other questions about it? Carry on. That will end our focus points for our committee discussions.
Oh, we got a couple more.
Oh, yeah? Oh, I'm sorry.
Policy. You're actually the chair of that one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well played. Nice try.
I see that now. All right. So as, as far as policy is concerned, I don't have any attachments. So this is just our school reopening plans.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I'd sent a, sent a correspondence to the church families today. And then I shared that with the school board and the district staff as well. So I, I wanted to kind of bring this up, but I also want the board to, even though you see it on my list, I probably see it from the administrators as well. So I mean, really kind of some highlights, if you will. I mean, we've had four weeks of meetings scheduled every day during the meeting, multiple hours. The only focus of that meeting has been reopening and that's just internally. Externally, in working with peers from the region, peers from the county, peers from the state, easily hundreds of meetings, all Zooms with, with colleagues from throughout the state and regionally to listen to what others are doing, to, to share feedback, to offer suggestions, ideas, to bounce ideas. And I can tell you that the concerns that Stephanie articulated are concerns that we have as well. Those things are not boss, than us, one bit. And I can tell you from being in weekly meetings with 21 other superintendents from Dane County, those are the same concerns that every superintendent in Dane County has. But I can also tell you that as of last Thursday, when we last met for three hours, their plans and how they're proceeding in addressing this situation don't look much different than what we're doing as well. Because the DPI, much like the WIA, is not going to say this is how it has to be. There's a couple of reasons for that. Number one, what happened with the state Supreme Court striking down the initial order. Basically turned our state in this situation into the wild, wild west to a certain extent. It became every county for itself. And in some counties like ours, which self-proclaimed, we have the most stringent orders of any county in the state of Wisconsin. Public Health Madison Dane County said that themselves today. Whether we like that or we don't like that, I guess to me, that's irrelevant. That's the reality. So our challenge is to try to make plans based on what the county is telling us we can do, based on the feedback that we get from parents. And I don't even like expressing it to this, but this is the reality. It is going to be balancing risk. And individual families will have to make decisions on what they feel comfortable with. I guess the one thing I will say about people that are talking about online options, I mean, we have every intention of making online options available through our school district and making that as good as we possibly can. I will sit here and I will swear to somebody that, that, that user interface, that experience will be much better than it was in March because in March, we got slapped upside the head on a Friday afternoon and had to start a week later. We now have had time to prepare. We've had time to train our staff. We know a lot of things. We learned a lot of things. We got a lot of feedback. So to me, the bottom line is we are planning that unless the county tells us we cannot, we will bring students into school if they and their parents feel comfortable. And if they do not, then we'll provide the best opportunity that we can provide for an online experience. And that's really what our hours and hours of planning have centered on. There's other schools in the county that are releasing their plans, if you will, in the next week or two. Public Health Madison Dane County is supposed to release their guidelines this week. Our timeline was very purposeful that we knew this was going to be important to people. But at the same time, if you just sent a survey out on June 1st, that data would be useless by now. The fact that we sent it out on July 1st, there's already people that have emailed me and said, well, I've changed my mind. So the, the notion that we're pseudo-chasing a moving target is somewhat accurate. But once again, the foundation or the, the premise of it is that we are going to do the best we can to meet needs. And if that means in-person, then we, we will try to do that as safely as possible. And if that means people want to be online, we will do that to the best of our ability as well. So I don't know if people saw the letter that was sent today. This was kind of just our attempt to reassure people that this, this is at the forefront of our thinking and our planning, but at the same time, given all of these other factors, not the least of which is the lack of guidance from the county. To say we have a plan, we could have come up with a great plan and shared it tonight to then rip it apart and start doing one tomorrow. So that, that's our reality. And yeah, I don't have a whole lot else other than other questions. Do people have, do board members have things you'd like to bring up now? But no, our, our intention, since we started our, our very deep planning, I would say on this topic is that on July 27th, so two weeks from today, we would like to have as much clarity as possible to kind of lay it out and say, this is what we believe it's going to look like. I mean, the principals have already been communicating with their staff members. What I'm hearing from public health, a huge focus is the 60 to social distancing. So they've been setting up classrooms to maximize distancing, removing unnecessary furniture. So I mean, there are some positives here. We're getting rid of a lot of old stuff that people haven't used in decades. And that's really where kind of some of their planning has been. The mask order, once again, love it or hate it, is not a bad thing for us as a school district. Because that then gives some teeth to the district saying, we need to wear a mask. Because it's a public health order. It's not just a school district procedure at this point. It's by order of Dane County. So yeah, we could talk on this topic for hours.
I guess I'd like to hear or have feedback on the teachers and staff kind of opinions and, you know, cause I think the struggle is, you know, you give families the option, but the teachers have an option, you know?
We did. We surveyed the staff and received over 110 or 115 responses from staff members. And of those staff members, 11 of them indicated that they were concerned about returning to work. Now, whether they did that because they feel pressure, it wasn't that scientific of a study to ascertain.
That's actually extremely lower than I.
Bev has been, Bev Whalen, our HR manager, has been following up with those 11 individuals on a case-by-case basis, just to kind of ask what, what their reasoning was. Because the question was just simply yes, no, or maybe. No one said no. 11 individuals said maybe. So she's following up with those individuals. I had a 45-minute conversation with her attorney this morning about what does that process look like? Is it a matter of trying to provide accommodations if possible? I mean, if it's a situation where someone could work from home potentially, I mean, those are all things we would look to do. The bottom line is in some situations, the notion of working from home may not be feasible. Well, then there's other provisions, the FFRCA or CRA, the federal situation, FMLA, ADA. And there's a number of other legal implications that come with this situation, all of which we're aware and, you know, working with our legal counsel. But yes, we did survey our staff.
Is it a lot of, kind of across all grade levels or clustered on the?
No, I would say it's dispersed throughout.
I'm surprised by that. I guess I was thinking we would have a lot more of a mess figuring out things if even closer to 50% of staff said, I don't want to, you know? But I guess that trend is opposite of what I.
The difficult part becomes, depending on how this all plays out for the next six weeks. If once that moment actually arrives, then people make the decision. I'm out. And once again, I say that, th- these are going to be situations that 421 school districts are dealing with.
Yeah, they won't be isolated.
So while that doesn't make me feel good about the situation, I know that we're not going to be the only ones trying to make these incredibly difficult decisions and there will be plenty of people to talk to about how are they handling those situations? What are they doing? And in other parts of the state where the restrictions are vastly different from a county level and basically no restrictions in some cases. The notion to me that they are going to be any more successful in doing this than we are seems, yeah, counterintuitive. I don't know that they're going to take the same precautions. So that's, that's kind of the update for now. And yeah, I'm certainly willing to answer any, all questions from board members. It's a very challenging situation without a doubt. We've got about 15 action plans concurrently being executed by various members of the leadership team to keep us on task and with deadlines and with actionable items to keep kind of plowing forward. It's your daily penance of COVID planning.
Well, I'll share in James's statement, just thank you guys for everything. And even from this point forward, as even all the, the concerns I raise or we as a board or you know, on the defense or, you know, just throwing things at you, it by no means is taking away from all the effort that you guys are doing. And, and even our ability to trust in what you're doing, that's, you know, obviously has nothing to do with it. We're beyond, I can just be personally beyond thankful for everything you guys are doing. And I feel lucky that we are in your hands, so to speak. But challenge, I mean, it's a cluster and so. And so, I mean, even in my mind, I have so many hypotheticals that I feel like as a board member, if somebody asks me that, you know, I would want to give to them. But it's just an endless perpetual hypothetical situation that, you know, I think we just won't have answers, which is the struggle with us. Thank you guys for trying to do your best.
Can I, can I say something from here? It might be really helpful to let families know that the online, that you're planning for something different than what online looked like at the end of the year? Because I think people are assuming it's going to be very similar, even though, you know, like I'm hopeful for something different. You're saying there's some great different things options. But I think that could reel people back in to know that it's going to be set up very different. It will not feel the same. And I mean, just hearing that you've already talked to the staff, then I clearly talked to two of them, or scared people of the teachers. So this is very comforting to hear. And I think it would be very helpful for, you know, everyone else who's, you know, right now rallying up to do virtual learning to somewhere else through this, you know, starting program. I don't know, it was very helpful to hear all this, so thank you.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that feedback. And that's something, I mean, in the absence of communication, something else fills in the void. So if that's a question that people have, and by virtue of spending a few minutes to write a thoughtful message that somehow encapsulates what we just discussed. Because no, we, when we first had our first meeting, we spent the entire morning kind of going through a structured reflection activity with regards to how 1920 ended. And that was a great kind of grounding activity for, I mean, it was almost a wild moment. Because in the heat of the situation, you don't really realize all of the things you're learning and how you're growing and how you're getting better. Because you're just focused on trying to survive one day to the next. But then to go through a three-hour exercise and to reflect and to talk about things about how that delivery and how that interaction and engagement can be different and needs to be different. I mean, unfortunately, we knew that five weeks into this and we couldn't scale staff development fast enough to possibly.
We were in an impossible situation.
Take a car from a country gravel road to the highway. But absolutely.
Yeah, no, I think that would help ease a lot of people who are on fence right now and not knowing what to expect.
Okay, I appreciate that feedback.
Does anybody have anything else in regards to the school reopening plans? Any other future items to discuss?
Um, and then with PR, or is that your?
Uh, no, we're just on policy right now.
Oh, I did not, that was your transition.
I did.
Like in total?
No. So then, as far as the school reopening plans, it says we'll come back for July 27th approval. By then, things may have already changed a little bit, who knows? So.
Yeah, but I'm optimistic we're going to have more clarity. Because as I said, the county is earmarked this week. And I know there's a lot of other districts in the county that are sharing information. But of course, basically all of us are, between July 13th and August 4th is the target date to share that information with our board and community. So it's going to happen pretty much everywhere in the county in the next three weeks.
Is there a deadline, you have to make that decision?
No, other than people won't be happy with you longer.
I guess there is a certain time, a date that's, if you were to open, what it had to be.
No, I mean, I would say quite frankly, the default status quo, which clearly in our part of the state is not really an option. But I mean, for others, that might just be, I don't know how much of a conversation they are having in other parts of the state, because I think they're just kind of planning a reopening as normal.
But there also probably is a recognition that a week before school starts, a week into school, everything will change. So we can plan all we want, but the reality is, nobody knows.
And we all share that.
Right.
All right, well, then we can move on to 5.7, which is public relations. I'll go point with Barb in our chair.
I think before we defer to Doreen, who's hanging on with us, I think, right?
I believe so.
I think Steph brought up a good point, maybe about the schoolology. Like if we did a public post even to kind of share our parents, you know, above and beyond just saying, hey, this is what we're doing. Maybe a more interactive kind of visual thing that gets people excited.
Got it, wrote it down. Doreen?
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you. Just curious if, I guess, kind of regarding the FAQ document, if there was anything that you wanted to talk about, I guess, kind of just regarding timeline dissemination, where, how, things like that. And then you saw the feedback that Mary Beth had shared. So that we can work on implementing that into the FAQ. But if there's other things that you wanted to verbally address with the board while you had a captive audience.
Okay, well, good evening and lots and lots of items on your agenda tonight, so I'll make this as quick as possible. We are on track with the communication plan. The FAQs I did update with Mary Beth's feedback tonight. It was quite simple, I did look up the grade level. One of the things she asked is how high the grade level was in reading. And it might be a little complicated, so I'll probably go in there and try to streamline it just a bit. But the purpose of the FAQs is really going to be a running document that we keep on your website for people who are checking in with you at various times throughout this process to find out the answers to some of the most commonly asked questions that we've encountered so far. That list will grow, possibly from suggestions from board members or Jordan or other administrators. That list is typically kept online. And then we will draw from that when we do public information outreach, depending upon when that is. But for example, you had the community conversations. We were very, very, we took very serious notes. And those were some of the questions that we heard during that meeting. So not a real complicated piece of communication, but pretty fundamental to one of the things we want to make sure are always keeping current. Answering those questions as they arrive, because if one person asks other people what happened. As far as other communication, we are, and, you know, we, we have to wait till you have your resolution approved. It would be putting the cart before the horse if we did too much work. But we are making some assumptions that you will find a resolution that you will do. And so we are starting to look on public information materials that are appropriate for whatever you decide. We got a pretty clear indication in the milk shop where you're headed. So based upon that, we'll be doing things like a video. That'll get started as soon as we know the direction you're heading, so that the people, that's a, you know, very common way of communicating now. We will be doing mailers and making sure that your public has the information they need to make a decision. But we're on target, so the FAQ is just simply something that will always be updated as we know what those questions are that the community seems to be asking. I don't have much more than that, because that's the next thing up. But do you have questions for me?
Doreen, I know we've talked about this, and I apologize for not remembering fully. What are you targeting or what do you think's a good target to get the FAQ out there and to have that, you know, like on the website or even potentially? I understand social media might be, that's a little different animal, depending how we want to handle that. But what do you think's a reasonable timeline for that? Is that something we're going to wait until the board has formally adopted a resolution? Or is that something that maybe after the next board meeting, when they've publicly reviewed draft resolutions, that we would get out there? I'm curious for your thoughts on timing.
Yeah, I'm really thinking it's after the next board meeting, when we know more clearly where you're going. Remember, this is written as if you haven't made a decision purposely, right? Because it's a public document right now, but it's not posted to your website. Because we don't know the final decision. So FAQs can go on a website all the time. This is where people start checking in, right? If they're going to be looking for information. Once we know the resolution, and once we know that the board has approved it, and again, we don't have that yet, that's when our materials and our social media campaign, all the rest will start in earnest. But right now, I'm pretty cautious, because it's still work in progress. So I would say yes, Jordan, after your next board, we can draft the introductory document. This is what the board is considering, and here's some commonly asked questions, anticipating a decision. I believe August, what's, I can't, no, sorry, I don't know. Is it your first or second board meeting in August?
It'd be the second meeting. And then the.
First board meeting.
No, it's the second. So it would be the 24th actually, so the state statute is the 25th. So at our action-focused meeting on Monday, August 24th is, I think, what we're anticipating for. If it goes to that point, then yes, the resolution would be approved that night.
And that's when everything will really start kicking off. But I will say, just as I've said this to Jordan, her and Beth once or twice, I know that the board and the administrative team in York are highly focused on this. We really do kind of ramp up towards the November date. That's the date that you get some of the more in-depth information around, make sure it's on the website. Then as we, as we start rolling out materials, it'll go higher level, higher level, to quicker postcards than we before, right? So everything we designed sort of ramps up towards that date. So we need to be working now to get that material devised. But we can't finalize it until August 24th. And then immediately after that, we'll be doing our reviews of all of our information.
Clearly, I have the two questions right in.
I've talked to Quarles and Brady, and I mean, so we just had our workshop a week ago. So I emailed her, School Perceptions, Bear, Doreen, and everybody the day after that. And then I believe it was Thursday roughly that I talked to Allison, who we work with at Quarles and Brady. So she was taking the email and then some other information from our phone conversation to try to get some draft, which the plan will be is that we'll have a written draft on the agenda for July 27th. And that'll be the time to kind of go through those in a bit more detail. And then that gives us, you know, a couple more board meetings after that to refine and finalize before August 24th. But yes, it's in her hopper, just waiting to hear back.
And so how much of you and Lisa talked about, it's all about the language and, you know, some of the Fun 46 projects? How much of that do we tell to Allison, you know, how much of?
So that's, that's the conversation that I have with Allison on the phone. So when I sent the email, that kind of opened her eyes to what it may be. And then when she called me, it's like, okay, but, I mean, questions like, well, is the elementary building physically going to be attached to the other building? Like those are details that they need. Is the auditorium physically going to be attached to the other building? Are you going to tackle any other projects with this? So I mean, that's the level of specificity that.
The whole encompassing language that could.
That, yes, so that when we get to that point, you don't find yourself saying, well, sorry, we can't do that because we didn't have it in the language.
With the information getting out through FAQs or however we disseminated, we've focused on that, our whole people group. And from the survey, can we tell what their preferred methodology of receiving information is? I can't remember if the survey was that.
It was, yeah, it was.
It's like with older voters, to me, it, to me, it still seems like a lot of them do read the newspaper and things like that. I do.
Yeah, we do, yeah.
Gary, Mary Beth, what's up?
I think it was specific, wasn't it in the survey?
It was. Their preferred method or where they get most of their information from, those questions were asked.
I'm pretty sure it's the Star News.
Star News was one of them. Mail actually was rated relatively high. From parents, it was more email, direct email communication from the school district.
I was just wondering with that particular group of people, is the one that we probably don't influence the most?
Social media was in there for all groups, don't worry.
I know, I was gonna, well, isn't a large group of the purple people, like over 18, but not the older population that we have in Mazo Mani? So I was wondering, like, if it is coming out through the Star News, I mean, how much is going on social media?
Well, so actually, the largest proportion, if you will, or largest number of people in that group is, it would be retired people, it'd be non-parents, non-staff, maybe grandparents. But no, in terms of that group of individuals, the largest demographic in that group that is of eligible age to vote is actually the retired community. And they have the highest voter turnout as well. However, no, we will certainly use social media. Because we understand for many others, including a lot of our parents now, and certainly younger generations, that's, that's kind of how you live your life, is through those types of communication channels. So no, it'll be, it'll be all-encompassing without a doubt. But like I said, the largest number of individuals that fall into that subgroup is actually the retired community. Absentee voting, shameless plug, if you're not registered somewhere else. That will be a way that the 18 to 23-ish crowd can get involved in a positive way. But that's, that's for a different night. But that's something to keep in the back of your mind as you're having conversation with your peers, is like, well, hey, if you're still registered in the district, you can cast a ballot here in November.
Jordan?
Sorry, Doreen, are you going to get mad at me for saying that?
Well, no, 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 no. I just want to say that because of all the changes and everything with the pandemic, there's some confusion out there about what voting's going to look like. We'll be directing people to two websites for most of the materials that will, we think will have the most up-to-date materials. Myvotewisconsin.gov and the Wisconsin Elections Board website. So just kind of an FYI when it comes to how to vote, or where do I vote, or what's voting going to look like? Those are the two website resources that we'll put in your materials and keep on your website. Then people can plug in what they're looking for and find it online. So that's really handy, that's a really great website now, keeps everybody current. The other thing I'll talk, just, I'm not going to talk about, but just kind of remind everybody is, once the school district, the board approves a resolution, we want to just review, and I believe Quarles and Brady can review this with you or provide you the guidelines, the difference between advocacy and information. And it's a really important conversation that we need to have as district employees. They, people who work for the school district can't advocate for a position on school district times. And that sounds like an easy thing to remember, but it's very important for your district that we go with sort of the rules or the laws, so that there isn't a step on the, you know, it's always innocent, nobody purposely does that. And then what the board's role is, we could have, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards provide guidance to the board as to what your role can be. It's different than Jordan's role. Once, once, once the resolution's passed, that's when you actually have a resolution that you're asking of the public, the rules change as far as public advocacy goes. So we can provide you two performance services with all of the information and do a really great information campaign. But I just want to just call out that when that time comes, we want to make sure that we review advocacy versus information, so that we are perfectly within the law and you're very important.
But the public can have a favorite.
So when you talk to Quarles and Brady next time, maybe you could ask them for those guidelines. I know they have a nice online.
Yeah, no, but great reminder, Doreen. That's why I thought you might scold me, because I thought I was flirting with advocacy rather than information.
Not right now, you're okay.
I can remember I was saying through the past, on the cell, he's like, we can always say, vote, vote, vote. We can say, vote yes, we can say, vote no, but it's always vote, vote, vote. Neutral, very neutral.
Well, the information items that you sent out to us this week was the reminder of how long it had been since the last referendum, what our financial situation's been. of how long it had been since the last referendum, what our financial situation's been as a district, and then just, I think, also the relative amount that we're asking for, for very, I think, needed, needed things, not like, I think, non-debatable needed things we're, we're asking for on the 22 million for sure. And I think whatever, to the, the group of the older voters that might read these, I think, to me, they're sort of like the parents and grandparents that their kids have graduated, but they still have some sort of custodial financial duty to the school district almost as this big human kid that they still have some custodianship of as a responsible district member. And I feel like we're the district that asks for very little allowance. We spend it thoughtfully and we do our chores and I, I feel like, however you phrase that to that group of people that are asking to support us, I think it's important for those, those statistics that you threw out there really resonate with me and I think that, to me, seems like that would resonate at least with that group of people, if not everybody, but particularly that group of people. So having that information somehow incorporated is really helpful. I can't remember to what extent that doesn't have IQs because I read them last week, but...
Yeah, no, and I think to that end, I agree, once I got through that second piece and dug in a little deeper to the other districts that were not within the last five years, I mean, the fact that of that cohort of 20-plus school districts in the conference and region, we were the furthest removed from a capital borrowing question by four years. And the fact that all of our conference peers had passed, in some cases, multiple referendums in that same timeframe, even for context, because the easy thing to say is, well, we haven't, we haven't done anything similar to some of our neighbors, like, you know, Mulholland, Orover, Middleton, Cross Plains, but that's kind of an apples to oranges comparison. We're two school districts. In terms of commonality with size and scope of the school district, it's a much different comparison, so, but to look at those other ones and to say, yeah, you're talking years and the fact that we don't have any debt, we have been good stewards, we're not coming back repeatedly, it's, it's time. That, that does have to be a part of the messaging, I would agree in some way. Any other questions for Doreen right now while we have her on?
That just got me thinking, is it a slippery slope if the paper were to run something and use that type of language of it's time or, you know, a slippery slope of advocacy where the paper just did it, but we're involved, then what is, what's that?
So what the media reports, the media reports, right? So they write their own headline. But if it were a purchase ad, we were to purchase something in the newspaper, then that would, the district would be accountable to the information, the laws about public information during the lockdown.
But let's say they quoted one of us saying, it's time.
It's time, I would have to think a lot of all of that. You'll see I'm very conservative on messaging, but as a result, I...
I'm just using that as an example that if, because I know Joe has finished his, is he still?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. But I think with the SOC referendum, that they did a page spread of needed updates in itself. And so if you did reach out for comments, then that, those are just the little things that I could easily, you know, yeah, it's time, you know, but I guess those are the things that you have to be mindful of.
I mean, my, my thoughts on this is, and I had told Jordan once before, you know, if we go with this, is he prepared to go out and go to all these meetings and advocate for us? But if we're talking about these purple people, they're not going out to listen, they're staying home mostly. So we have to figure out how we can get to them and we can send mailings to them and we can try to send the newspaper to them, but really, it's the people out here that are coming to our meetings that are gonna be the most beneficial to us for getting the word out and talking to the people you know and talking to grandpa and grandma and people that maybe are not getting out too much. And we're really gonna need you guys in this whole deal. And we, we're not gonna be able to do a lot of advocacy on our side, that's something you guys can do on your side, though. We can be fat, fat people, but you guys are gonna have to advocate really hard for us. So please, we appreciate all of you guys coming.
Board members do have a little bit more on the Nancy because you're gonna take a vote as elected officials and you're gonna be able to say why you voted for them. But I'm particularly more concerned about Jordan and anybody who gets paid salary as a staff member of that. And that's why I think, Jordan, it'd be really important that we go over that with laws that Brady mentioned, right, in the beginning.
Yep, no, I can do that.
Anything else?
Seeing head nods and acknowledgement, which is ever more difficult in the mask world, but
Thank you, Doreen.
I think that means we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The only other thing I wanted to bring up quickly, just because we're on the topic of facility planning, albeit in a slightly different methodology or mode, Jim Weedy from PSI had sent me an email. Obviously, the notion of traffic and the safety concerns has been something that a lot of people have brought up. So I'm just gonna read some of the highlights. This was an email he sent me at nine o'clock this morning. We're working with KL Engineering out of Madison to complete a traffic study. This may take a little longer than a traditional traffic study because COVID has drastically changed the traffic patterns. They're gonna do comparisons to similar locations and extrapolate the data to find the traffic impact. They commonly work with the DOT and that should not be an issue. In addition, they are developing options to address any potential traffic impact and they also feel that that will be acceptable or could be acceptable to the DOT. So I didn't know a whole lot about KL. I did jump on the website after he sent me the email. They've done a lot of big highway projects throughout the state. I, I don't know them personally, but we are not hiring KL. That's who PSI is working with to gather this information. So I just wanted to provide that update.
Send a thanks to him.
Well, he knows that that's an important topic for us and for all of the residents and so it's nice that he's really putting that on the top of his list and one of the things to address and look into.
So I just want to share that too.
Does anybody have anything else as far as public relations? Hearing none, we can move on to agenda item number six, personnel. I will look to combine 6.1 and 6.2.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Mike?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I don't know, I guess as well. All right, but I'll do number seven, which is set committee ordaining dates as needed or future meeting dates.
A question that I have is, you know, we started the pandemic and temporarily suspended in-person comments because of the pandemic.
Yep.
We evolved, the community health perspective evolved to the point where we are back to what I'll call the real phase two, because now we're in like phase two light, in terms of restrictions. And none of us know where this is going. So would the board, does the board want for July 27th? Do you want us to schedule a Zoom that we would publish so that the public could sit and listen to the meeting? I'm not advocating to remove you from this room because I think the work we're doing right now requires a presence. But in terms of the general public, would you want us to schedule a Zoom meetings again? And that can be right on posting that if you would like to join us remotely, you can log on.
There's that option.
Yeah, we could, yeah, we could post it that way. I mean, that's, we always have that flexibility if we want.
That's a good, a good idea.
So, a lot more people. I guess my intention would be is, I mean, we won't change the structure of comments or anything like that, but if people want to log on and, and listen in without sitting here for two-ish hours, then they have that flexibility just given the circumstances we're in right now as a county. Okay, and I'll plan to do that for the 27th.
All right. Anybody have anything else? Well, then it looks like we're on to adjournment.
Second.
Mike?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
No, yes as well. Thank you guys all for coming. Thank you guys, all the residents for coming as well.